And David, could you do a roll call vote for us?
Yes, Dr. Gentry.
Present.
Dr. Gentry is present. Ms. Elrod?
Present.
Ms. Elrod is present. Ms. Spearing?
Present.
Ms. Spearing is present. Ms. Bugs?
Present.
Bugs is present. Ms. Bush?
Present.
Ms. Bush is present. Ms. Player Peters?
Present.
Ms. Player Peters is present. Ms. Pupa Walker? Don't believe she's joined yet. Ms. Frog?
I'm present.
Ms. Frog is present. And Madam Chair, you have seven members present.
I think that may have, was that Jeannie that just got on? I guess.
Hey there, Jeannie here.
Okay.
I'll mark you present, Ms. Pupa Walker.
Sorry about that, everybody.
Thank you, that's okay. Um, so it has been a very tough day for us as a board and I think we are all reeling from the news this morning. Um, I thought I would start out the board meeting by reading a statement that I read at the press conference this morning. And then if anyone would like to make remarks, they could make them after the statement or at the end of the meeting. It is with a heavy heart that I am before you today. Our school board chair and dear friend Anna Shepherd passed away last night peacefully and unexpectedly. We have lost a tremendous leader who carried us through many difficult transitions as a board and helped lead our school district to a productive and stable place. She will be dearly missed. Anna Shepherd has consistently been a champion for our students. She challenged all of us to be better and to do better for the students of MMPS. She knew that was where our focus had to be. Anna was a strong proponent of arts education and a former band mom. In fact, her personal email address was Music Mama. She served for all the right reasons, never for personal gain or recognition, but truly as a servant for her community. She was focused only on the betterment of our school system. Hermitage, Donaldson, and Old Hickory couldn't have asked for a better representative. Anna never stopped fighting for the students and she was advocating to the end. She represented the board and the district before the Metro Council during this spring's ongoing budget discussions. I suspect Councilman Mendez and other council members knew very well where she stood. Scripture tells us that peacemakers are blessed and Anna certainly was. She was often in the middle of the controversy of the day, negotiating between the two sides on lots of issues. She did more than vote or even lead. Her ability to engage in the holy work of reconciliation kept this board together in its hardest days. I don't know what we would have done without Anna. I personally don't know how I would have gotten through this past year without Anna's strong leadership and I told her that many times. I would like to extend our sincere condolences to Anna's husband Larry and to her children and her family, as well as to the McGavick High School family. Our prayers and our hearts are with you during this difficult time. Uh, and I'd like to call now just for a moment of silence before we start the meeting. All right, Dr. Gentry has requested to pull two items off the consent agenda. What are those items, Dr. Gentry?
Thank you, Ms. Frog. I'd like to pull items 1B12 and item 1D.
Okay, I'll entertain a mo- uh, move, uh, a motion on the remaining consent agenda items.
Sorry, can you repeat that one more time? I'm sorry.
1B as in boy, 1B12 Orion Building Corporation, and item 1D as in David Student Handbook Revisions 2020 to 2021.
Thank you.
Would someone like to make a motion?
Madam Chair, this is Jill Spearing. I move to approve the consent agenda as written, with those exceptions.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second.
That was Frida seconding?
Yes.
Okay. Um, all right, is there any discussion? No, there's not discussion. We'll call for a vote.
Dr. Gentry? Dr. Gentry votes aye. Ms. Elrod?
Aye.
Ms. Elrod votes aye. Ms. Spearing?
Aye.
Ms. Spearing votes aye. Ms. Bugs?
Aye.
Ms. Bugs votes aye. Ms. Bush?
Aye.
Ms. Bush votes aye. Ms. Player Peters?
Aye.
Ms. Player Peters votes aye. Ms. Pupa Walker?
Aye.
Ms. Pupa Walker votes aye. Ms. Frog?
Aye.
Ms. Frog votes aye. Madam Chair, you have eight ayes.
Thank you. All right, so now we will take up item, uh, 1B12, the Orion Building Corporation contract. Ms., uh, Dr. Gentry?
Thank you, Ms. Frog. Um, I, I just want to just refresh my memory. Is this the same corporation that we had the huge public participation turnout around, um, failure to pay, uh, some of the subcontractors that were involved? I don't know if there's anyone on that can confirm that. Mr. Hanson or Mr. Profit available?
This is David Profit. Um, yes ma'am, this is the same group and the, uh, particular incident, uh, was due to non-payment of the subcontractor, not Orion. In fact, Orion, um, attempted to pay, uh, Mr. Rosante the monies that were purported to be owed to him. However, they would not sign a nondisclosure agreement, which is customary in these types of circumstances. And, uh, therefore they didn't get paid. But they were, uh, Orion was prepared to pay them the money that they felt that they were owed.
And this is, um, Dr. Battle.
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Profit, can you also clarify, um, that, um, the Orion Corporation subcontracted with the individual? So if you can work through how the subcontracting went, um, so that the board members can be refreshed.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, Orion had a contract with a particular subcontractor and you'll have to excuse me. I'm having a gray moment and can't remember the subcontractor's name. Uh, but they had a, a contract with them and then the subcontractor had sub-subcontracted a portion of the work out to Mr. Rosante. There was not good record keeping by both entities, uh, between them. And, um, but Orion did, um, prove satisfactory, at least to me as an architect who's seen these things a million times, uh, that the payments to and from that subcontractor for the contracted work were paid. The argument is and always has been between the subcontractor and Mr. Rosante and not necessarily Orion. However, in discussions with Orion, in order to make, um, the, uh, to, to resolve the issue, uh, they did attempt then to, uh, pay the contract, uh, and resolve the issue. But again, the documents that needed to have been signed, uh, would not be signed by Mr. Rosante. Joe Haas, I believe, was the subcontractor's name, by the way.
Thank you. So I have an additional question. Um, so, and I think I know the answer to this. So with regards to, uh, this particular contract, do we have any insight into whether they will be moving forward with using Joe, uh, Haas as another subcontractor? Do we have a thought about that?
No ma'am. I have instructed Orion that if they are contracted on any of our future projects, that Mr. Haas, uh, would not be entertained as a subcontractor.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, would, would you like to make a motion on this item?
I'll have to say something. Or I'll do the motion then discussion. Um, I, this is, uh, Frida Player Peters. I would just like to just put on the record, um, that, um, best practices would be used, particularly with contractors, having another incident like we had, uh, Mr. Rosante is unacceptable. I appreciate the effort to, to try to make up the, uh, the payment. Um, I know that didn't come to a satisfactory agreement between both parties, but I think it's crucial and important that, um, Orion chooses subcontractors that are high road, high quality, and, um, make sure things are put in writing. Um, it's unacceptable to have work done. Um, I know it's a subconscious, you know, sub-subcontractor result, which is often, it happens often in construction. But just as a kind of a moral statement, that, um, employees shall be paid, particularly in government, public contracts, that are done by the taxpayers' money, um, that we need to get steward of that and make sure that, uh, we practice, um, best personnel pop practices and we would hope our contractors and expect our, our contractors to have the same best practices, um, and the best moral authority to pay for work that's been performed and services that've been performed. I would be very disappointed if we have a situation coming back where another subcontractor has come back and saying they had not get paid. Um, and we, I would hope that all, um, and I know it's not always customary in construction for it to happen, but at least under this purview and under our purview, that, um, work, there would be a contract within the work. And I don't know what legal obligations we have for that, but just as an expectation, um, I will likely set the expectation from a board level, um, that even in future contractors other than Haas, that's the expectation of the board, if any contractor wants to do work, um, with the, with the Department of Education or the Board of Education with us, um, that this is a moral standard that we hold to and an expectation that we hold to, um, that, um, whatever wages are decided upon, that they would be fulfilled and be fulfilled. There would be an agreement before work is begun on, uh, whatever, um, whatever business is decided amongst the, amongst the parties. Um, so hopefully we can avoid the situation again.
Yes, Ms. Player Peters, if I may, just very quickly, Ms. Frog, uh, you're exactly right. That is the way that we intend to operate, uh, much better as we go forward. One of the issues in this particular case was there was not a contract entered into between the subcontractor and the sub-subcontractor. Going forward, our specifications now require that, so that anybody working on an MMPS project is under contract, um, and therefore there's a legal, uh, document involved that will bind anyone and everyone to the requirements of the contract and the general conditions of the contract. So we, we, uh, will not have this issue again, um, and, uh, but I totally agree with you, Ms. Player Peters. We'll, we'll certainly go forward with, uh, those type of efforts.
Thank you. Any more comments?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, I move to approve the contract with Orion.
Okay, that was a motion from Jill Spearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, that was Ms. Peter Player?
Yes.
Player Peters, I'm so sorry. Um, uh, all right, is there any discussion? Any further discussion? Okay, I call for a vote.
Dr. Gentry?
True.
Dr. Gentry votes aye. Ms. Elrod?
Aye.
Ms. Elrod votes aye. Ms. Spearing?
Aye.
Ms. Spearing votes aye. Ms. Bugs?
Aye.
Ms. Bugs votes aye. Ms. Bush? Ms. Bush? Uh, Ms. Player Peters?
Aye.
Ms. Player Peters votes aye. Ms. Pupa Walker?
Aye.
Ms. Pupa Walker votes aye. Ms. Frog?
Aye.
Ms. Frog votes aye. Ms. Bush? Try that one more time. Madam Chair, you have seven ayes, one present not voting.
Okay, thank you. Um, next we will turn to consent agenda item 1D, the Student Handbook Revisions for 202021. Dr. Gentry?
Yes, so, um, I, I wanted first to thank, uh, Dr. Battle for the time that she spent with us on, on Monday, presenting in that one-way conversation, no debate, no discussion, uh, so I'll make sure that's on the record. Sharing with us at a high level some of the changes that were, were made in the, um, to the student handbook, specifically around, uh, the disciplinary codes and how they, uh, would be applied in the future. Um, so I just want to kind of take us back to, um, when we had the meeting back in the, in the conference room, um, a couple of years ago, uh, when the request was first brought to us to take a look at those codes, how they were being applied, the severity of some of the punishments, and more specifically and more pointedly, um, the disparity in the data that we have, we were seeing then and we're still seeing, um, although there has been some improvement under the previous, uh, changes. Some of the, the disparities that we've been seeing and how those, uh, disciplinary codes are applied to students of color, specifically black males, uh, in our, in our district. And so I, I think I'm struggling a little bit, um, to see how the revision will put us in a better place or at least help us maintain the progress that we have made. And, um, I was reading through it and I, I saw one of the earlier pages about more, uh, intense interventions. So I got several questions, but just want to get a better understanding. You know, for the example, the, the one code where we were, um, we had one time you could either expel a student or suspend a student, out-of-school suspension for five days or an expulsion. And so we put some, some space in the middle, right, so we can give them some additional days. What I, I'm struggling to understand, and under this current budget, how are we supporting the students, um, in that time when they are out of school? So when I think about this, and I say, said this before, so I apologize for repeating myself, but I struggle with our other goals of improving literacy, um, our literacy rates, when we have, uh, again, such large number, amounts of days being spent out of the classroom and often by repeated populations of students. And so I have a student who is repeatedly, um, put in an out-of-school suspension situation and, uh, would dare say there's some correlation, um, between that student's number of days out of the school and, um, their, uh, scores. That being the case, I, I also want to say, I understand to, uh, provide teachers and building level for staff and building level leaders ability to, to take some action to, um, ensure that they have an environment in the classroom and in that building that's conducive for all students to learn. So I just need a, a better understanding of, number one, what are we really doing to minimize the, uh, the, I guess, these, uh, the subjective application of the coatings? Um, what are we doing to prepare that student to return to the classroom, uh, as, as a more productive, uh, student and, and more, uh, in a position to learn? And, uh, as well as that, what are we doing to, to help our teachers? Is it more classroom management training? Is it cultural, um, sensitivity training? Is it cultural bias, unconscious bias training? I just need a better understanding, um, because I'm not getting the connection directly. Not a school teacher, but I'm not getting the direction, the connection directly between how making these changes, especially in our current climate, right? So we're going to have students coming back into a classroom who've been outside of this structured environment for much longer than just a summer. Um, and so I'm afraid that what we're going to have is, um, just more, um, superfluous applications, um, uh, of these, of these, these out-of-school suspensions and, and these disciplinary codes. Again, dealing with a student that's just not absent from that structure. I apologize, but just my brain dump, um, trying to get some clarity on what we think we're accomplishing with the changes that we've made.
Dr. Gentry, I'll be happy to, um, respond to your questions there and, um, feel free to follow up with me if for some reason I missed, um, uh, one of them in my response. Um, first and foremost, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge, um, the hard work of our teachers and our administrators uh, when it comes to building strong academic cultures in, in their school buildings. Um, I also want to remind us that when we're talking about disciplinary infractions, almost or nearly 90% of our students have either one or no, zero disciplinary infractions throughout, um, the school year. So what we're talking about is, um, about 10% of our students, um, who may, um, have, uh, one or more, um, infractions throughout, um, the school year. And what our school teams, um, do, what our teachers do is work, um, closely with, um, their students and their administrators regarding, um, the, the plans for students upon, um, their return. Um, that is a, a school-level, um, determination. Um, a lot of times if you see an extended amount of days, uh, part of that, uh, process and the investigation and the determinative disciplinary action is for the school team to come up with a plan of support. I also have to acknowledge and give thanks to our school, um, leaders who are working diligently every day to ensure that, um, they are providing those restorative, uh, practices and processes, um, to, to our students. Uh, with regards to professional, um, learning, um, our, our team offers a plethora of, um, professional trainings to our faculty. Um, as a matter of fact, um, there are so many of them that, uh, we can, we could probably, um, not just rattle them off, um, because our portfolio, um, and catalog of professional learning in this space is so great. And the beautiful thing about that is that those professional learning opportunities, um, are by our trained, um, leaders in-house. Um, those professional learning opportunities are offered, um, throughout the summer and throughout, um, the school year. You might remember previous conversations with regards to schools' tier-one supports, that every school, um, selects a tier-one support, um, for their school discipline plan. And then those, um, discipline options or those training options are around SEL foundations, uh, PBIS and restorative practices. So our goal is to ensure that every, um, staff member, um, is trained, um, based upon the needs of their, their faculty. And I would also be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that while schools had an option of those three trainings specifically, um, and can, can layer in others, um, based upon the catalog, many of them have chosen to have their staff trained in, um, more than one or all three, um, of those areas. So those professional learning opportunities, um, do, um, exist, um, and continue to be offered through, to our staff through the summer and throughout, um, the school year. Um, what you have probably heard in years past with regards to budget constraints, I mean, similar to, not the same, but similar to what we're experiencing, um, this year, they may have to reduce the number of trainings or the timing of those trainings, given the budget, um, constraints. But our team has remained committed to, um, offering and sharing the, the catalog of experiences and learning opportunities to, to all staff. Um, so they are a part of our catalog of offerings and are expected for, um, each school team every year.
Okay, Ms. Bugs?
Yes, thank you. And thank you for your explanation, Dr. Battle, and I, um, I appreciate you taking my, my call earlier this morning, even with everything that was happening. You know, Dr. Battle, we, we talked at 7:30 this morning after we found out that our colleague, you know, passed. So thank you for spending that time with me to walk me through, um, the, the code changes. I also have some reservations. I appreciated you kind of respectfully pushing back on me and making me think also, Dr. Battle. But yeah, my reservations are kind of along the same lines as Dr. Gentry's. You know, I think the, the past two or three weeks have just been really hard, you know? They're really, really hard. And I think when we, we as adults are having to acknowledge what's happening around the country and how it's impacting our, uh, our, our mental capacity, um, the mental drain, the, the mental toll is taking on us. You know, it's hard to see an unarmed black man call out for his mom with his dying breath. You know, that just, that, that hasn't set well with many of us, right? And I think the more I tried to process my own feelings, the more I thought about what our students are dealing with, that, you know, we've been in the middle of this pandemic, that they missed three months of in-person school and they've witnessed the same tragedies, injustice, racially-charged, um, interactions that we have. And, you know, how are they coping? And so when I think about what the fall will look like, I do think that there will be students with energy that we, um, you know, we need to be prepared to engage with lovingly and that we need to be able and ready to support. But the reality is, I, I think as the rest of the country is wrestling with anti-racism and biased trainings and calling out their colleagues, I don't know that we really do that in education. And please hear me well, because I understand how this can, how this, how my statement can be misconstrued, but it's just a truth that in African-American communities, in African-American homes, very early on, we're taught that the KKK was made up of policymakers and authority figures, legislators, police officers, and yes, even educators. It's an ugly truth, but a truth nonetheless. You know, we as humans all have some type of bias that we have to work through. And I remember, you know, I've told this story a few times, that even as an African-American woman in a STEM field, I still found myself being biased toward my female students and had to work through that. I had to seek out my own trainings, you know, I had to identify that for myself. But if we have educators who don't know their bias or don't understand the way they may misinterpret or miscode something, when we make it vague, we, we add to the injustice early on in their lives. We, you know, we add to the injustice, uh, you know, done to children and specifically black children, black boys, when we don't acknowledge, you know, how, um, especially in a, a system this large, with 167 schools, making sure we do things with fidelity. We don't always, you know, think through how the little people in our, in, in these situations will be negatively impacted by someone who just doesn't, hasn't quite grappled with themselves internally. And, um, that gives me pause and I respect your professional suggestions, Dr. Battle, and appreciate, you know, what you're looking to do to support the, you know, our students and our teachers and, and having better conversations. But it's one thing to offer a training and it's another to mandate it. And true, we haven't had the resources to mandate these, but again, with the, the current climate and people are finally starting to accept that, hey, racism is a thing. Racism is, racism is something that is felt whether it's done overtly or, um, subconsciously. And I think that we need to be ready to acknowledge that and I'll go ahead and say that I am developing an anti-racism policy. I know, um, you know, we, we as, as board members have just been talking to the community and acknowledging the community's thoughts right now. And I think we need to be prepared to support them in different ways. And I'll pause there so I don't go down too many rabbit holes, but that's where my reservations lie and that, you know, um, there are measures being put in place to try to better support implementation or to make sure that there's not an abuse of codes. But I just think that sometimes if we make the codes, um, a bit more open to interpretation, that they can be subjective. Thank you.
Okay, we have two other board members that would like to comment. One is Fran Bush, who appears to be, um, unable to get back into the meeting if any of our, uh, staff can help her with those, with that technical problem. And then, uh, Ms. Pupa Walker would like to make a remark.
Okay, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
So I, I don't want to repeat what my colleagues have already said. I, I do want to say that I know that every year, for many years, we have had a push and pull, many community conversations, uh, staff conversations about the handbook. But at the end of the day, um, I, I do believe it comes down to what our fundamental beliefs are about children and about, um, our role. I also, you know, I know that schools are asked to take on so many challenges that students face outside of school, yet we're meant to or expected to alleviate or resolve or address or somehow, um, work past those things. And we frankly have not been supported in a whole range of ways, financially and otherwise, to address those things. Well, there's forever a struggle between, um, school safety and learning environments and students' rights. And we are, um, forever going to have a tension between those two things. Um, and so we have to eternally be, um, reflecting and, and adapting and evolving and, and our policies have to reflect that. But so do our funding and our practices and our training and our priorities. So I want everybody to remember that this year, we prioritize our funding on our budget. And number two on our list was SEL support. And we had seven mil, over nearly $7 million in possible line items to address a lot of these concerns, including advocacy centers, success coaches, restorative practice assistance in every middle and high school, redesigning our alternative learning centers and providing more social workers and SEL specialists. I also know we've been in long conversations with partners like the Oasis Center and Stars and many others to co-locate staff in our schools to help our students, because it's truly a collective responsibility to make sure students are supported and, and so are staff. And so the change really begins with each of us. And I think that we have, um, an obligation to hold ourselves accountable. But also, as my mentor, Star Herman says, for every unit of change, we expect we must provide an equal measure of support. And we have not. And we have not provided the support that schools need in lots of ways to address student behavior in all of its forms. And so while I understand that adjusting and adapting this handbook will occur for the next 30 years probably, the bottom line is that we have to prioritize training staff, supporting staff, making sure that we have ways to help students manage conflict, to learn from situations where there's conflict. And so while I'll support these changes, I want to ask Dr. Battle and her team to create regularly scheduled reports to us this year on how it's going and how the data looks, because our data has gone in the right direction for the last few years. And I would love to see a public-facing dashboard where we can truly monitor how this is going and how we're addressing it to make the case for future funding and support. And so I recognize this is a terribly challenging and difficult conversation, and I respect every single advocate and passionate person that wrote to us. There's no easy answers here, but I hope that we can not only do better, but hold ourselves accountable for doing better. So I'll stop there.
Okay, we have three other board members who would like to speak first. Ms. Bush?
Yes, guys, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, I got locked out. Internet problems again, I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure that we all understand why we're here with this change in policies. Last year was a very difficult year for our high schools, middle schools, and elementary schools as far as behavior and discipline problems. And if you guys remember when we had our social workers to come stand before us and speak to us about the shortage, because I definitely understand the emotional learning around, around this situation. But we have to remember that we are not financially capable at this time to support these care centers that we need to put in place that we did not once we passed or once this was voted on prior administration. So we actually failed in that area as far as trying to make sure that we can give our students support. So we have to remember that and also the fact that we have got to understand, this is not about prison to pipeline. This is also about parenting. It means that we have got to hold our parents more accountable when it comes to student behavior. Now, we talk about race. I have five African-American boys, and in this day and time, it is very difficult to see what we're seeing right now. This is a little different. We're talking about behavior problems across our district, and we have got to set a precedent and standards in our district that we have got to compete with our other counterparts, with other districts that have these same policies in place so that their students can learn and their teachers can teach. We are not paying our teachers enough to deal with discipline problems and the fact that our students are suffering tremendously, those who want to learn, because we are always up against student behavior and students not learning and teachers can't teach. We have gotten to tie our belts and we have got to send a message, and we have to have standards in our district. I hold my boys accountable with their behavior. Nine times out of 10, you would never, ever see the Bush boys be disrespectful to a teacher, and if they are, it is my responsibility to make sure I correct it. Now, we do have students that do have needs. There is no question, I've always said that. And we do have those supports in place. But what we have to do is send a message to our repeat offenders that this is not tolerated because students know what they can get away with. I support Dr. Battle and what she has done. She has done her research. She has talked to stakeholders. She has talked to teachers. She has talked to students and bus drivers. She's done her homework. We all have seen it, and we know that we're having a problem with discipline. And I will make my last statement, and that is, last year, discipline got so out of control. And before COVID, these students were tired. The teachers were tired. Students were saying, I hate my senior year because we're not able to learn because we have the same students that keep acting out over and over and over again. And I just want to graduate and be gone. And that's not the spirit of what we want to leave our, these children leave their legacy at their schools. But I just want to make sure that we're clear, this is not about race. This is about being responsible as a community and making sure that we are parenting. That's what this is all about. And making sure that we hold and we make sure that we hold our students accountable and make sure that we give the teachers the support they need in order to teach. And that's my comment. And I do support the changes in this policy.
Okay, we've got two other board members who want to speak, and it appears Ms. Bugs wants to respond. So let me let Jill Spearing, please, speak next, and then Rachel N. Elrod, and then Ms. Bugs.
Thank you, Ms. Frog. I agree with Ms. Bush. Dr. Battle has worked tirelessly with teachers and principals, NOAA, the Juvenile Court, and many others to create these revisions. They are needed, and I move to approve the student handbook revisions for 2021.
Okay, do we want to take a second and then continue discussion?
Sure.
Is there a second? Okay, let's move to Ms. Elrod.
Thank you. I was going to ask Dr. Battle if she would please share some of the information that we have heard about the four code recommendations and the two level recommendations so that there's a more robust discussion of what exactly is being changed on the board floor.
Yes, Ms. Elrod, I am happy to do that. There are four codes in particular that are being recommended for some revision. One is the addition of a 400-level code for repeated violations. One is a reduction of a level code that is currently a 400 code regarding inappropriate sexual behavior of students. We have received feedback from all stakeholders regarding that code being very punitive to our students and not restorative in the nature we would like. And so we are recommending that we back that code down from a 400 level to a 300 level and really push its support to address that behavior. There's also a code regarding, a 400-level code regarding extreme disruption of the learning environment, and the revision there is simply to address the previous requirement of what's currently in the handbook of it affecting multiple classrooms to only being a single classroom, just simply on the premise and philosophy that every student deserves a safe nurturing learning environment. And that is feedback that we have received from various stakeholders. With the same code, what we've heard from our Discipline Review Board in particular, who reviews many of these infractions, is that when we use the words intentional or unintentional, it is very subjective for them to uphold appeals or requests from parents in support regarding determining the intent of the act. And so really just focusing that code on making sure that it's about creating safe nurturing environments for all students, given the level of disruption. And the final code is in regards to a 400-level code, which is specifically 413 group fighting, allowing some flexibility for school teams with assigning disciplinary action. Currently, there's two options for school teams. There is a five-day suspension option, and the only other option they have is to expel students. And what we heard time and time again, a plea from teachers and from our principals and from parents and students, is that if you have a student in that situation who have only had one particular incident, they would like to have flexibility not to expel students. There are several occasions this past year where principals' only option, given the timing and the extent of the situation, that they had to move for expulsion. And principals, teachers, parents, and students are saying, we would prefer not to go to an alternative learning center if I have an opportunity to restore, repair harm, and continue to adjust back into my learning environment in a proper manner. And so those are the extent of the changes. There is some language change with regards to, and we heard from stakeholders, how we can be more restorative in our language and how we approach disciplinary incidents in the school building. And so that was well-received and something that we want to continue to stay focused on as a school district. So in our Level A responses, we have adapted some of our language to be more restorative. It's important that it's, that we give space and time for students to be heard, for adults to share and listen, and for adults to have an opportunity to share and listen as well so we can become clear around the incident and really separate what happened from the student and really seek to repair the student and equip them with the skills necessary to not repeat the offense. And the last bit of tweaking just kind of echoes that and requires of our school teams to ensure that they are considering several different components before assigning disciplinary action, making sure that the school team is considering the age of the student, the disciplinary history, the level of harm before assigning. There is not anything in our code book that requires a certain day of suspension. Parent, excuse me, principals have a range. So when you see one to three days, it does not mean it's an automatic three day. That means we have a range after the principal has considered the student's infraction and how that student can repair the harm or disruption that has taken place. Alongside with these recommendations that is outside of the handbook, we have, again, identified all of our internal professional learning opportunities, which we do plan to recommunicate to all of our teams again, as well as a monitoring process, which Ms. Pupa Walker mentioned earlier in her comments. So we've already created our structure of review and monitoring of disciplinary actions as we're moving forward. And we should always do that, not just with the recommendations that are before us. And so that will allow us to take a deep dive into any disparities, any incorrect coding, and definitely to increase expectations and accountability for all of our leaders and school teams. I know that was a long explanation, Ms. Elrod, but I hope that answered your question.
It did, thank you. I really wanted to make sure that I understood from previous conversations that when we talk about discipline, a lot of times the assumption is that it's going to be more disciplined and more punitive, and that some of these changes that are going to be made inside of or potentially may be changed inside the student handbook are more restorative in nature, whether it being changing some of the 400 codes to 300 codes, or as Dr. Battle explained to us, the Level A of having more teacher language that's more restorative and based in teacher conferencing, or the Level D recommendation where there's a new option, so children are not just immediately expelled and then removed from inside of their school and their peers. And we want to keep that, we want to keep those children within the communities that they're learning inside of. Additionally, I think it's worth us mentioning, so, Dr. Battle, this will be for you as well. Can you tell us everyone that was considered within these discussions to make sure that we're, you know, saying to everyone that this decision and these discussions were not done in a silo? Will you please let us know who all was considered in those discussions and decisions?
Yes, ma'am, I'm happy to share that information. As you are referencing, it is important that we do not make any changes or proceed with planning without getting input. So as a part of our process, as we communicated early in the spring, we engaged with our school leaders, we engaged with our teachers, we engaged with our transportation staff, we engaged with parents and students, we engaged with our community organizations, we engaged with our security department, MMPD. We really tried to make sure that we brought as many stakeholders around the table to have this discussion. In fact, many of those conversations I was a part of, and some of them I led myself to make sure that I was able to really gather the insight of the various stakeholders to make, to really consider the data that's before us. And we talked about the data and the evidence that will support any recommendations and our, keeping our vision and our goal in front of us. And so there were some recommendations that came from every stakeholder. And quite frankly, we probably had more recommendations internally than what we're seeing tonight. And there were, there were some recommendations that came my way that I have not brought before the board because it's important that we have the data, we have the evidence, we have a balanced approach in being restorative in nature for our students, so it's not just about being punitive. This is really about how we can support and educate our students as well. And so there were other recommendations that did come my way that after kind of bouncing it around various stakeholders, I don't think we should move forward with, given the goals that we have for our students, the professional development that's needed, and the resources that school teams and students should have genuine access to on their school campus.
Okay. Thank you.
So we now have Ms. Bugs, and then Ms. Player Peters would like to make comments.
Thank you, sorry about that. So I understand and appreciate everything that you all are saying. First, again, I just have to acknowledge that Dr. Battle was a true professional. You know, she offered pushback, and just because she disagrees with me, I'm not going to try to get her fired. That's not what a board should do. So I just have a difference in opinion, specifically when it comes to the increasing the time of suspension from five days to 10 days. And I just think when you, if we don't have measures in place to make sure that a child is restored during those five days, or now, you know, what seems to be, what might be 10 days, I just have concerns about that. That's where my biggest reservations lie. And I think it's important for us to, again, stop pitting one stakeholder against another. We shouldn't be pitting teachers against children or pitting parents against teachers. You know, we all have work that we can be doing to better support students, but true, parents are the first teachers. That is so true. But not every parent has the same or even equitable sets of tools. So for my son, you know, I'm going to make sure that I work with him so that he's not misogynistic and that he's not a pervert, that he's not sending pictures of girls like that. That is my job to do. But when he steps out of line, I know how to advocate for him, I know how to teach him. But what happens with, when a child does not have an advocate or does not have a knowledgeable advocate as a parent, and they don't know what to do, but they do feel like the consequence was too harsh, or, you know, it didn't fit the inappropriate situation? And I just think we need to be mindful of those things. And as much as we want to dismiss race, it's just not dismissible anymore. People have to accept that there are biases with authority figures in the way we dole out consequences, particularly to black and brown boys. And I just, again, I just have reservations. I'm, at first, I was going to ask that we postpone this to have more conversations around it, but I also know that when we postpone, postpone really important votes, it sets back our administration. It keeps them from, you know, important planning time. It sometimes increases the costs of things we need to pay for, so I'm willing to just vote against it. But I do just want to make sure that we're, we're going to continue to have the conversations and think through how it's affecting some of our more vulnerable disenfranchised populations. And I love Ms. Pupa Walker's suggestion that we have a forward-facing dashboard where the community can see the suspension rates and we can, you know, they can dig in and ask us questions, and we can either offer pushback or make adjustments.
Okay, Ms. Player Peters?
Yes, I want to make a motion that we do a six-month pilot program of this, of these changes with the, with the forward-facing dashboard and reporting that Ms. Pupa Walker suggested. I agree with my colleague with Christian Bugs. We cannot be blind to the unconscious biases one may have. We all have them, whether you're a black person, white person, person of color, another ethnicity. It's just inherent to being a human being. And there's a tough part of how do we give our teachers the tools to give, to be able to be a manager, to be manager of their classrooms? And I am not a teacher, never was one, you know, close as I was to a Sunday school teacher, which is nothing compared to a real educator. But I think we need to be mindful of how we approach this. And I want to be very cautious of how do you give the tools and provide some leeway, but also be very mindful of, we are a district primarily made of people of color and of all ethnicities and racial backgrounds. And I want to be really sensitive that we are not portrayed of culture, of bias, and I have faith and trust. And I have faith and trust in our director of schools. That's to be very mindful of that. And I want to see how do we find that ground. So I want to come and revisit it. I mean, hopefully maybe at the end of the calendar year in December, and with constant monitoring and constant accountability with our community partners with this. I hear, you know, the the valid concerns that they have about inequities. But there's a balance of how do you create discipline? How do you create an active nurturing environment? But also, we have to be very mindful of, in this day and age, what are we setting up the culture and the structure and scaffolding we're putting structure up to support our children, especially because of store of practice, social, emotional learning. And that, you know, our intent as of March 10th was to have substantial funding put into that. And then, you know, unfortunately, we have come to a pandemic. But I mean, I think it's important to be pulling the record that we have to be very mindful about disparities that's going on. We have to make sure that our practices are fair and equitable, and what does that look like? And it's a continuation of adjusting and building. And, and be very mindful of that. And I wish this was a different budget year, because this will make this conversation totally different, and that we can implement stronger socially, morally practices, restorative justice practices around these discipline problems in a more substantial way, like a better word. And so just as a black woman, as a black alleged official, I want to be very mindful and knowledge of what, what are we doing and make sure we support our students of color, and also providing teachers resources that they need to, to be able to do, and hopefully get some flexibility. But I do not want to permanently commit to these changes. So I'm hoping that, you know, a motion to have this as a pilot program for six months, where we can come and revisit it, see trends, and hopefully, you know, the economy come back, and maybe we can ask for something on budget to help support this even more, to provide just some flexibility and leeway, but more important, reexamine where we are, and see what's working, what's not working, and we, and be able to adjust accordingly.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? The motion is for a six-month pilot program.
Second?
I'm sorry, who was that? Ms. Poopa Walker?
Sorry, that was Jeannie.
Yes, okay. So we have a motion, a second. Is there further discussion?
Ms. Bo, Ms. Frog?
Yes, Ms. Spearing.
Yes, I'd like to hear from Dr. Battle about her thoughts about the pilot.
Let's see here. Oh, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. So with regards to a pilot, to be quite honest, I'm processing how we will roll out a discipline, a student handbook pilot going into the year. I think some of the implications we have to think about is with the student, student handbook, the reason we go through this process over the summer is because we have to make significant revisions and updates from year to year with the handbooks. What's going to happen is, once we make this, putting on my principal's hat, once we make the determinations regarding the student-parent handbook, principals and school teams are going to start baking this into everything that they do: training, communications. A lot of schools print or create handbooks of their own at the school level. And so that would have some potentially even cost implications and in time and implications for them. I would also be concerned by the integrity of implementation, given that it would be a pilot. That would be concerning to me as well. And I just, I think it might be difficult to approach the student handbook in a pilot, from a, from a pilot point of view. I'm also thinking about professional learning for our teachers as we, and principals, because we are immediately going to go into the planning phase with our school leaders this summer, who will be then training their staff once we come back in the inter-service format. And then teachers are going to be training their students, and then school teams are going to be training their local community. And so by doing that, we could possibly be looking at undoing that in an already very challenging scenario. So when you're thinking about communications, it's, it's difficult to do that at the beginning of the year. I think it could be very complex and challenging for us to address again in December or January if, if things should change drastically. Now, I do completely agree with progress monitoring the data and being willing to make adjustments as, as we see fit. So if we see disparities, if we see subjectivity, we're going to immediately address those. But I also want to remind the team that, again, only about nearly 90% of our students don't have a disciplinary infraction at all. And when you're talking about miscoding and disparities that might be present, you're also talking about a limited, limited spaces where that's happening. And so part of our structure is to be able to identify where the miscoding or the misapplication is happening, and correcting that immediately along the way, as opposed to adjusting the handbook time over time. These recommendations would not be before you if they weren't fundamentally sound in what we're trying to approach and achieve on behalf of our students. So those are my initial kind of processing potential implications by approaching a student handbook in a, in a pilot format. It would be something completely new for me, from my classroom experience to my principal experience, and now as, as the director. So we would, we would have that as a challenge to overcome.
Thank you, Dr. Battle.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. On that motion, do we want to proceed forward with the motion? Ms. Player Peters?
I'm processing. It's such a heavy topic. I usually, I'm pretty good about making my decision, but I mean, I mean, honestly, I'm just torn. I mean, I feel for the community response and want to be equitable and be very mindful in that equitable aspects and respect the work of, you know, Dr. Battle and the team. And so, yeah, just trying to process. For, for, I wish there was kind of a committee, a committee moment to really flesh this out a little bit more. It's kind of tough to, as, you know, as we, as we talk as a board to process this.
Okay. Okay, I guess we'll go ahead and vote on the motion then, unless there's more discussion.
Yes, let's go do that.
Okay. All right. I'll call for a vote then, David.
Dr. Gentry?
No.
Dr. Gentry votes no. Ms. Elrod?
I need a point of clarification.
Okay, you need?
I'm so sorry. Yes, I want, I want the, yes, I want the motion repeated, please.
My motion was to, to implement a six-month pilot program with a, with a monitoring, forward monitoring dash, kind of dashboard of, of data of implementation of this, of the policy, or of the revisions on a regular basis from the administration.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Elrod?
Yes, it does.
So Ms. Frog, I'm sorry. I know we're kind of in the middle of the vote, but can I just, I'd like to speak directly to this motion. And I sent a note, but I guess you missed it.
I didn't see it.
It's okay. It's okay. I know it's a lot moving parts. We don't have hand raise functionality here, I don't think. But I think to Ms. Peter Player's comment, I think we've got something like a redundancy. And I apologize for use of the word, I can't think of a better one. If we're going to have the dashboard, and Dr. Battle is committing to the dashboard, we have visibility into this data. And I don't know how frequently it'll be refreshed. Six months could be a long time if things are going awry. I'm not admitting this until the six-month point. So I think if we have the board, and we're getting this data as a board on a regular basis, at any point in time, this board can say, according to the data that you're showing me, things are going awry. Or according to the dashboard you're showing me, this particular, these particular fractions, which we changed, are seem to be growing the number of expulsions in our overrepresented subgroups than it has in the past. So I think the dashboard itself allows us to react, be more proactive, right, and react when we see the data trending in a direction that we don't want it to go versus waiting six months to revisit it. So if that makes sense. And so that would be my thought about why I'm voting against it. I don't want to be locked into six months. And I don't feel it's necessary if we're going to get the data on a regular basis. Because as a board, we have the authority to say, this doesn't look like it's working. And we can say that three months down the line. Thank you.
Okay, so we do have the motion. On the, we have the motion and the second. And I think we're going to have to vote through this. If someone, and if it fails, someone can make an alternative motion. That is also fine. So let's start back on the roll call vote, please, David.
I'm going to start back from the beginning with Dr. Gentry, just for clarity's sake. Dr. Gentry?
No.
Ms. Elrod?
No.
Ms. Elrod votes no. Ms. Spearing?
No.
Spearing votes no. Ms. Bugs?
No.
Ms. Bugs votes no. Ms. Bush?
No.
Ms. Bush votes no. Ms. Player Peters?
No.
Ms. Player Peters votes no. Ms. Poopa Walker?
No.
Ms. Poopa Walker votes no. Ms. Frog?
No.
Ms. Frog votes no. Madam Chair, you have eight no's. Motion fails.
Okay, we're starting. I'm going to like to make an alternative motion.
May I bring my motion back, Ms. Frog?
Yes, Ms. Spearing.
Yes, thank you. I move to approve the student handbook revisions for 2021.
Second.
Okay, is that Ms. Bush?
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Bush seconded. All right. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yes. Sorry. I do have one question I didn't get to ask. This will be for Dr. Battle. Dr. Battle, can you help us understand what happens with a student who is suspended for five, 10 days? What is the interaction with that student, with that student's family to address the infraction or the behavior, to prepare that student to return? And you may have said it, and I know you shared a lot, and I appreciate that. And I apologize if I'm asking you to repeat something.
No, I'm happy to respond to that question. Because we are a grading for learning district, we provide the opportunity for students to do retakes, take assessments, complete assignments. I am looking forward to now that we have maybe able to realize our one-to-one goal for our students with technology, that we can continue to engage students moving forward via a remote space as well. So that's something that we have not done in the past, that I think we have a prime opportunity to elevate as we're moving forward. I also want to just clarify in that particular code, which I believe is 413, and I'm recalling all this from, from memory, I'm trying. It is up to a five-day option or up to a 10-day option. It is not, it's not an automatic five or 10. So there is not a scenario where we would say that there's an automatic 10-day suspension or automated, automatic five-day suspension. We are holding our principals accountable and clarifying and expecting them to take all things in consideration before making that determination. You could probably expect that if we got to a 10-day suspension, that there's lots of factors that are playing in, that are needed to separate the student, equip them, restore them, but also do the same students or individuals who might have been caused harm.
So I'm going to follow up on that, if you don't mind. So with the dashboard, is the dashboard capable, or can we ensure that it's capable of also reporting on the interventions, right? So in the handbook, very early in, in the introduction, it talks about we've improved or intensified or increased intense interventions. Can the dashboard report out that when Sharon was disruptive, and it was decided I needed to be sent home for five days, or six days, or whatever that number is, what were the SEL-type interventions that took place? I'm excited about our, the remote learning piece and can keep me engaged academically. I'm really more asking about the social and emotional interventions. And can those be reported on the dashboard?
Sure. So we're talking about several different dashboards at this point. And so we're also talking about customizing something as we move forward. First, I want to remind us that we have had and continue to have a KPI around discipline and discipline disparities. So we will continue to monitor via our dashboard with data in, in that space. We also have in our student management system, we have a program called Infinite Campus, which is our student management system. That is where our, our educators, our principals, our staff go in and log any disciplinary infractions. In that system, they are to document and log all interventions for students. That is our monitoring system, where if there is an infraction for students, we should always be able to go in and check to see what interventions have been put in place to students before any disciplinary action was assigned, given the discipline matrix. So inside our Infinite Campus system, which is our student management system, you have that in the discipline category within the system. But you also have a dedicated page for every student that is called supports and interventions. And we train our school teams, every staff member, every year around that expectation to document and log support and interventions into the system. So we've got our KPI dashboard, which is, which we monitor through data warehouse. We also have our student management system, two places in the discipline category, but also on our student support and intervention page. That is where we log all interventions, all enrichment, parent contact, so on and so forth.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are, okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the handbook changes. We have a second, and we're still in discussion. Did anyone else want to make remarks? Okay, I will just say briefly, we, when we voted on some of the disciplinary policy changes, I guess it was last year, it was a difficult decision for some of us. But there were a few of us on the board that were very concerned that we didn't have the right supports in place. And since we made the initial changes to our policy, I have gotten so many reports from teachers, from principals, from African-American leaders in our schools, that we just have kind of out of control classrooms. So I really appreciate Dr. Battle's leadership on this issue, and that she has worked with a variety of people who are involved in the classrooms to try to address some of the issues. And I appreciate Ms. Player Peters' effort to, to provide some monitoring for the, from the board level. I know this is a very sensitive issue. And, and I, I think, you know, that, that's a good thing for the board to keep an eye on what happens with these changes. But I think to change mid-year, you know, would be disruptive, as, as Dr. Battle pointed out. And so if this is something that needs to be revisited, you know, over a summer in the future, that's certainly something that the board can do. So I'm going to vote in favor of the changes. And just want to say I appreciate Dr. Battle's leadership on this issue. Anybody else before we vote?
I, Amy, I think that was, that's, that's very good. I won't be voting in favor of it, because I remember also when we made the initial changes, that we did not have the resources available. And given where we are from our budget situation now, I don't think that we have the, the funding to provide the supports to implement these changes due with fidelity. With all of that being said, I hope, and I sincerely pray, that we will see our disciplinary data not regress, that we continue to trend in the right direction, and that the teachers do feel supported. Because I believe this is going to pass. But I, I hope that the teachers get the supports that they need to maintain the learning environment that's conducive for all students. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. All right. So we'll call, call for a vote.
Dr. Gentry?
No.
Dr. Gentry votes no. Ms. Elrod? Ms. Elrod? We'll come back to Ms. Elrod. Ms. Spearing?
Aye.
Ms. Spearing votes aye. Ms. Bugs?
No.
Ms. Bugs votes no. Ms. Bush?
Aye.
Ms. Bush votes aye. Ms. Player Peters?
Um.
Ms. Player Peters votes aye. Ms. Poopa Walker?
Aye.
Ms. Poopa Walker votes aye. Ms. Frog? Ms. Frog?
Aye.
Ms. Frog votes aye. Ms. Elrod, I'm going to come back to her.
I apologize, I had to run down the hallway to parent. And I heard you calling my name, so I'm so sorry. Aye.
Ms. Elrod votes aye. Madam Chair, you have six ayes, two noes.
Okay, thank you. Now we have the director's report, and so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Battle at this time.
Thank you, Vice Chair Frog and board members. I know we're virtual right now, but there's an empty seat where Chair Shepherd will be sitting, and that's going to take a lot of getting used to. She asked for this report just last week, and I know she would have been listening carefully and asking me some good questions, as always, as she always did. We are all going to miss her leadership, her kindness, and her relentless advocacy for our district and for our students. Earlier today, I joined Mayor Cooper, Dr. Alex Jahanga, and other education leaders to announce the reopening plan for all Nashville's schools, public, independent, Catholic, and charter schools. We work with leaders from each of those education sectors to ensure that we'll all be on the same page when it's time to start school again in August. I co-chaired the group along with Dr. Jahanga, who chairs the Metro Coronavirus Task Force. We consulted with pediatricians from Ahary and Vanderbilt, other public health and emergency management experts, and Opportunity Labs, an organization with deep experience in pandemic response planning, public health, and emergency operations. The result is a plan that prepares for three basic scenarios. A relatively normal school environment, a hybrid approach that involves significant social distancing, and a combination of in-person and remote learning, and one we became all too familiar with this spring, with schools closed and all learning happening remotely. We will be ready for any of these scenarios, but there's only one that I'm hoping for, and that's a return to traditional school on August 4th, which is eight weeks from today. Of course, there will be an opening that will be safe for everyone. I think the great majority of students, teachers, and certainly parents are united on that point. This plan covers everything from instruction to cleaning to technology to transportation to athletics. It explains what we'll need to do to prepare school buildings for reopening, and what students and their parents will need to do before coming to school each day. Using this plan as a framework, an internal task force at MMPS has been working to develop implementation plans for the 2020-21 school year that will be based on these scenarios and the guidance provided. The task force includes three working groups: operations and safety, academic planning, and student, family, and staff support. The working groups include teachers, parents, students, staff members, community members, business partners, and union representatives, along with central office personnel. With those implementation plans in place, we can be sure that every child in our district receives a great education, no matter what circumstances are thrust upon us. And Mayor Cooper's announcement yesterday that the city will spend $24 million in CARES Act funding for devices and internet connectivity for our students will make a huge difference on that front. Each school, in consultation with the district, will develop its own specific implementation plans for how to operate under the three scenarios outlined, and that is after the district determines the protocols and the expectations for every school moving forward. Unique challenges such as vulnerable student populations, facility capacities, or successful implementation of remote learning in an equitable fashion must be considered. We will continue to develop and announce further plans with guidance for school administrators, families, and staff through June and July to prepare and account for changing circumstances. We will be releasing more detailed reopening plans the week of July 6th, and we can anticipate being able to say which of the three scenarios we'll be starting school with at that time, so that parents and staff have adequate time to prepare. And of course, we will frequently provide updates between now and then. Again, I hope we can start school in the traditional way. Just as I wish our recent graduates could have had the classic senior year experiences, I want our new students and their parents to experience the first day at a new school the way generation after generation has. This won't be easy. Supply chains for personal protective equipment, like masks, continue to have reliability issues, and we still need to identify and obtain significant funding for materials and resources if we're going to effectively implement our plans and ensure equitable access to education. Please also understand that we are reviewing our plans and adjusting daily to health officials' guidance, CDC guidelines, and our local context. It will take a district-wide effort and a city-wide effort to overcome the challenges we'll face and to create the conditions we'll need for a safe return to school. But I know we're up for it as a district and as a community. As always, I appreciate the board's leadership as we navigate these tough times together. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Battle. So we're going to turn now to announcements, and I'm going to start with Ms. Pupa Walker and work my way around.
Excuse me. May I ask Dr. Battle a question before we go to announcements, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Dr. Battle, I have three questions. Will there be any practice runs, such as riding the bus while implementing social distancing, placing masks on students, taking temperatures? And will this happen before July 6th? Do we have enough thermometers at the school levels? I'm thinking about large high schools like Hunter's Lane. How many thermometers would they need if we are in that phase of reopening school? And how many principals served on the school reopening task force that wrote these reopening steps?
Thank you, Board Member Spearing. Those are all great questions. And again, take me back if I misstep and do not answer one of them with regards to the trial runs. The one thing that we have acknowledged in our internal work groups is that the practice and the transitions are going to be critical to the success of any plan moving forward. And so the work group teams right now are considering all of the needs and preparation for the start of the school year. They very well may include practice ones or at least trials for us to work through our plans, whether they be at a smaller scale or a larger scale, to make sure that we're fully prepared for the opening of school. I also want to remind us that if we are in an opening space, it will be because our local data and research will indicate that it is safe for us to do so. It's also important for me to reference here with regards to the Nashville Plan. There are some various scenarios within those protocols with regards to social distancing. And so the health officials and CDC guidelines give some options with regards to what strategies we can use to mitigate the spread of the virus. Your second question, and this might have been the third question with regards to who of thermometers was the second question. Yes, we are in the process of securing thermometers for all of our schools. Part of the recommendation is not to do a wholesale check every day, but we are equipping, would be equipping, our school teams with thermometers. I believe that order has actually already been placed, so that if need be, they can take temperatures. And of course, if there were to be a case in the school, that they could immediately do so. So we would use, the thermometer use would align to our phased reopening plans, if that makes sense. But we are ordering, and schools will be equipped with thermometers. We work closely with the Metro Health Department and the COBOL, who oversees that work within the district. And the third question was regards to administrators and principals serving on the work group teams. Yes, we have several principals who are serving on the work group teams. I believe there are at least between two to four on each work group team. An initial ask did go out to our principal advisory group, of which many of them volunteered to be a part of the work groups. And so we asked them to identify which work group team they wanted to be on, so some of them have more than others, just simply based upon where they felt like their skillset aligned. But we continue to receive recommendations and individuals volunteering to support the work of the work groups. On that note, each work group has probably close to 20 or more various stakeholders a part of them, so that we can really glean the perspectives of various stakeholders, so that we can ensure that we're building strong plans. But as a reminder, if we were looking at a reopening or a hybrid scenario, it would only be because of our phased reopening plan that would suggest that it's safe for us to do so. Thank you, Ms. Spearing, for your questions. And I hope I answered them all.
Sorry, give myself a minute. I have a quick question. Regards to reopening, is there, will we have access to additional CARES funds regarding PPE for students during reopening? Or do we expect more stimulus, not stimulus? You know, CARES Fund, federal, state aid? If students can't, don't have masks, can't afford masks, don't have access to them, will we be providing them as a student, through students and staff throughout the phases, particularly Phase Three, when school is in session?
Yes, so what we are working through right now was important for us to finish the framework, which you heard today. What we've not shared are the detailed plans that the working groups are working through. We needed to get the Nashville Plan done, because that plan helps us identify what the PPE needs are at each phase. And so we have been working with Chief Swan, the Office of Emergency Management, and others with regards to securing some initial masks for all of our students. But we're also looking to utilize some of our CARES Fund to purchase additional PPE to maintain our level of PPE supplies, that's the word I'm looking for, available to students and staff. Also want to just update, based upon Ms. Spearing's last question, we've ordered about 2,000 thermometers. About 300 of them have been received thus far.
Just one additional question, if you don't mind, Ms. Frog. Thank you. Dr. Battle, in your report, you did make reference to the $24 million that we got for laptops and hotspots for students just at some point. And I know we haven't probably hashed out how we're going to distribute those, et cetera, et cetera. But we really interested in having a report specifically on who's involved in creating that plan, and how those devices will be distributed, maintained, et cetera. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Our academic planning work group will be, is the team that's working on the plans and can deliver updates with regards to distribution.
Okay, any other questions or comments about the director's report? Okay, we'll move to announcements now, starting with Ms. Pupa Walker.
Thank you, Ms. Frog. So I just want to just make a quick remark. We know that there are still budget negotiations happening in the council, and that there are multiple budgets out there. I want to commend Chair Mendez for his attempts to get additional funding for us to cover a part of our COLA increase that we gave last year. I want to reiterate that we will honor that commitment to cover that cost of living increase for staff that we gave them last year, including the mid-year increase. And Councilman Mendez's budget also provides funding for us to get every employee to $15 an hour, which personally I feel is something that we have prioritized for a number of years. And I want to say that Ms. Shepherd always talked about that passionately. And I think, as I think about her today and us losing her, I think it's poignant that we're talking today about finally getting to a place where we can get that minimum wage for employees. And so I just want to encourage fellow board members to support the budget that Councilman Mendez has put forward. I think it is, in this time of fiscal crisis, probably one of the best opportunities we're going to get. And I appreciate Councilman Mendez for offering that. And just thoughts and prayers for the Shepherd family, and thinking about them today, and wishing all of them peace, and knowing that Anna was a true community leader and made a profound impact on our city and our students. I'll leave it there. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Pupa Walker. Ms. Player Peters?
I want to echo our Budget Chair Walker about the $15 an hour. You know, this is a fight that I've been fighting for several years, and I think it's crucial. We're probably one of the last government entities that's not be able to fulfill this moral commitment. You know, when I was an advocate for workers, one of my sayings was that no government employee should qualify for government services. And getting $15 an hour helps make that, kind of, I guess, fill that sentiment that I have, that, you know, the cost of living here in Nashville is becoming more and more expensive. But more importantly, we have good, officially, our support staff, they do the hard work of our school. You know, as we had, you know, talk about the handbook revisions, it's a lot of times support staff that's having those one-off conversations, intervening emotionally, trying to pour into those students, have the conversations that the teachers cannot have, because A, they're teaching. And it's a different, a different voice that is also supporting the teacher. And it's the support staff that knows when a child is hungry, they know the issues they are going through more emotionally sometimes, it's because they have the time to have those one-on-one conversations, why a teacher is teaching to a full classroom, that that support staff person can take that student to the side and have the conversations. And they have children themselves that they're trying to feed. And, you know, $15 an hour is, you know, that puts you right at $30,000 a year. And so there's people, there's many of our support staff that works two or three jobs on a regular basis. There's a support staff I know that works at student, works at Metro Schools during the day and Walgreens at night. And when I go to Walgreens to get my mother's prescription or get things that I need, I have a conversation. And it's unfortunate when I go in the evening, I know she's putting in hour 12 of a long day and maybe going to 13. So we have people who are trying their best and really love the work that they do, really want to be part of their students, and who work full-time. This is full-time positions, I want to say, and that they should deserve full-time pay. And so the commitment that council members have put out there, that there's members of the board that really feel passionate about fulfilling that commitment. So I really want to put that out there. And, you know, also going back to our custodians, and I know Ms. Shepherd felt the same way I did about that. And the first time I met her 10 years ago was during the custodial fight that I was to try to prevent the outsourcing of custodians. And when she was running 10 years ago, that was one of the conversations that we've had, and one of the things that we agree on. So, yeah, so to Jeannie's point about being very poignant, you know, Anna and Shepherd, I didn't always agree, but one of the things I love and appreciate about her, that she was very respectful, very straightforward, and we always had a great, honest conversation about the issues. And, you know, in the past, my time on the board, we agreed on a lot of issues coming up budget-wise, and custodians, and textbooks, and things like that. And she's going to be missed. You know, I was in shock most of the day and had it set in. I said, once we have this meeting, it's going to time, it's going to, you know, it's going to start sinking in, the reality of her loss. So to our families, my prayers are with you. And she will never be forgotten. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Player Peters. Ms. Bush?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Frog. This is for Anna. When I got the news this morning of her passing, my heart was broken. She was a jewel on our board, very gracious, fair, always kind, and kids were always her priority. She'll be truly missed, and my prayers go out to her and her family. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bush. Ms. Bugs?
Yes, just echoing you all's sentiments, sending thoughts and prayers to Anna's family. 2020 has just been hard. And I also just want to acknowledge, and on a still-heavy, but on a different note, Teens for Equality, a couple of hours, our MMPS students, they attend middle college in NSA, are members of this group, or started this group, that's really been supporting this movement to eradicate racism and even to help fund schools more fully. And so I just appreciate that young people are making their voices heard. This young generation, they are bucking back, and I appreciate it. I appreciate them just speaking up and advocating for themselves. So just shout out to that group and to all the other young people that are just advocating for anything, you know, just advocate for yourselves, kids, I love it. Just 2020 has been hard, and a death this morning was another tough blow.
Thank you, Ms. Bugs. Ms. Spearing?
Yes, thank you. I have three announcements. First of all, congratulations to Amy Frog, who will be the guest speaker in a video conference with Diane Ravitch, educational historian and president of the Network for Public Education. NPE brings together voices from diverse NPE brings together voices from diverse perspectives, and tomorrow at 7:30, Amy will discuss with Diane Ravitch the fight for better schools in Tennessee. Secondly, I also support Ms. Walker and Ms. Player Peters to ensure a $15 an hour rate for our employees as well as a COLA. So thank you for those comments. This morning, I woke to the devastating news of the passing of our leader and chair of the board, Anna Shepherd. She may have been short in stature, but her heart was as big as Texas. Next to her dear husband Larry, her children and grandchildren, Anna loved metro schools. She loved politics, she loved leadership, she loved vacationing in Florida with Larry, her family, and friends, and she loved New Orleans. She loved music and the arts and the academies of Nashville. She loved the marching band and spent many years serving as president of the McGavick Marching Band in support of her own children. Often after musical and art presentations at the top of the board meeting, Anna declared to participants that you have seen the best part of the meeting. Anna, you will be sorely missed. Your equitable leadership, your love and respect of students and employees, I will miss your contagious smile, and most of all, I will miss your friendship. I extend my condolences to Anna's husband and best friend Larry and her children and grandchildren. May you rest in peace, Anna Shepherd. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spearing. Ms. Elrod? Ms. Elrod, are you on the call?
I am.
Okay.
Thank you. I first would like to bring some notices in my announcement. So first, this is notice that I am bringing an item to the board to take action on in response to the current and past due public conversations about systematic and societal racism. And this is being done in partnership with my colleagues with an aim of purposeful action over performance. Additionally, I am also providing notice of a naming of schools meeting. Tentatively, it's to be on July 14th, though I understand that this date may change as we have changes on the board. This meeting date is tentative, though, due to the need for board review and potentially board action. In this meeting, we will discuss the addition of short biographies on school websites, if the school is named in honor of someone, and then take a critical look at any school named after someone that is principally known for racist acts or promoting or defending racist acts or white supremacy. Lastly, I am proud that I was able to work with Anna. She always wanted the board to do and be better for our students and teachers. She had a unique and increasingly rare ability to disagree but not take things personally. I will miss our inside jabs, our jokes, and her knowing smile. I am better for knowing her, as is Metro National Public Schools. I think of her a lot, particularly as we continue to have our budget conversations, and hope to kind of carry her torch of talking to Bob Mendez a lot. So on that note, I am in support of Councilman Mendez's budget proposal and hope that the council moves forward voting very soon.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Elrod. Ms. Gentry?
Thank you. Again, I would also like to just send my condolences to Anna Shepherd. Again, you could not have met a more fierce proponent of what's doing what's, and I believe, again, as Ms. Walker has shared, this alternate budget that has been provided by Councilman Mendez allows us to honor some commitments that are long overdue. But, and to the end, as we talk about budgeting, I mean, part of a lot of what's surfacing with the recent protests and issues of systemic racism that have been raised, we've gotten this hashtag that's going around, #DefundThePolice. And I understand how that phrase, phraseology and the use of that term can be misleading to people, and there have been some interesting commentary around that. So just for a point of clarification and just give the people something to think about, when the phrase "defund the police" is used, again, I understand how it can be misleading. But I would rather people to think about the fact that what this is really doing is asking municipalities to conduct a detailed review of police department budgets, right? So there's funding in those city budgets that exists to address the myriad of problems that arise as a result of underfunding in other areas, underfunding public education, underfunding work programs, underfunding or not funding at all affordable housing efforts and other things. That what leads to the propagation of so many of the issues that we see in our society. So in other words, this whole "defund the police" is a call to use funding to address the problems and not equip police officers to deal with the symptoms. And so no one is looking to zero out a police department's budget or put them in a position where they're not able to protect and serve. We want to get them back to protecting and serving, and as a city, looking at the city as an organization, and each department has a goal to, to help the city recognize its vision and realize that vision for all of its citizens. And I think just a holistic review across the board of how every department is using its funds, and whether those dollars are placed in the right places and in the right areas, so that we're, again, getting to the root of some of the issues that we're seeing in our society and not equipping departments to deal with all of the symptoms of them. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Gentry. So I guess I will try to channel Anna Shepherd here and say that all of Nashville is paying their employees $15 an hour, except our school system. And so I hope, I have been on the board for eight years and will be stepping off in September, but I hope that before I leave that we are able to finally accomplish paying these folks a living wage. We know it's increasingly difficult to live in Nashville and fully support any effort to raise our base rate to $15 an hour. Also, I would like to thank Mayor Cooper for the immense investment in our students and for providing every child in MNPS a laptop, and also ensuring that all of our students have internet connectivity. This is a major step toward equity in our district, and so I am appreciative of the use of the CARES Funds to support our students. And there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville.GO.